Would have blown away.
Yeah.
Chris was. And then all the person would be able to laugh on the ground and slip down.
Yeah. That could have been a bad meal.
I got it. No, my calendar, they switched it.
Would have done that halfway between your desk and this desk.
That's quite fun. If the mail service will hold. Yeah, it'll draw today in the mail.
Probably. Hopefully, otherwise I don't know where it's going. Someone else will get your stuff.
The mail letters involved or sent packages involved.
Yeah, ladies here for this.
So now it has to go to.
Oh, oh.
I used to write something.
North Dakota.
Does.
Yeah, that comes back to here.
Is White House here on?
Yes.
Are your stamps, so thank goodness you want to sign me.
Yeah.
Official.
Yup, yup.
Yeah, I think it goes to Fargo, yeah.
You have a whole bunch of claims.
And I need to stamp in.
Yeah.
Eight fifty-nine. Yeah, see what happens. We're close. We're in the last seconds.
Yeah.
Hey, you're streaming.
Well, that's okay.
Oh, it's nine o'clock.
There it is.
Okay. Um, it's nine o'clock. We'll call the, uh, Cottington County Commissioner meeting to order. And if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance, I will lead that.
I'd like to lead this symbol by the United States of America and who we rely on for which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, number two is, uh, if there's any public comment, it can be submitted in person or by the telephone. The number's listed six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Number three, is there any conflict that is interest items today?
No, no.
Um, item four. Um, action to approve the agenda.
Second.
If there's, it's been motioned in second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, uh, we need a action to approve the minutes of the January ninth meeting.
So move.
Gabe, a motion by Commissioner Gable, second by Commissioner Johnson, um, to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item six, we'll have Steve come up.
Morning, Steve. Only needed to read. All right, the egg building. Um, engineers will be conducting boring and parking lot within the next week or so. Um. Um, government buildings don't really have anything really to speak on that at this present time. Detention Center, um, conversation, I had a conversation with Johnson's trolls, uh, job coordinator on the HVAC project. He will be, uh, giving me a schedule set, um, by the end of the week. Um, the preliminary pans are starting in the preliminary plans for starting is in February to remove all cooling systems and restructure of the, um, dock, uh, duck work. Um, park. Online reservations will begin February first, but call-ins will not start until, um, the first of April. And then soon I'm going to going over and review the year out camping, um, reservation booking system. There's been a little bit of conflicts and stuff going on with that, so. Um, weed. Um, the annual weed and township meeting supper is set for Monday, March fourth at six P M. In the expo building, it will not be in the kitchen this year. There is another function going on there. Um, I will be working the booths at the, um, Sioux Falls and the winter farm shows in the next month. And then the weed conference, um, will be in Spearfish in February.
You said the, the supper is March the fourth.
Yep, March fourth, Monday.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
But it'll still be in the extension.
It'd be an extension, but it will be in the expo building in the big building. You know, the kitchen is already booked and stuff. I could have probably done it the week before, but that follows right after the conference and that was just too, too close for me to get things put together. And then, um, the following weeks, there's, um, big events going on, big boy toy show and those kinds of things that start. So it was kind of hard to get something fit in then.
When you, uh, advertise that you might suggest what door they come in?
Yep, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, as long as you're here, Steve, item seven is the, that floor scrubber.
Okay, let's get to that. Um, this is the budgeted item that I, I reached out last year to be budget and, um, they, um, gave a proposal here, a reproposal here about a week or so ago. Um, with it, we asked and so we add if they'd be interested in that floor scrubber, the old one that is there, that is a two thousand and six model. It was previously here at the courthouse prior to going out there. Um, there, there's a lot of things that's starting to go wrong with that. This thing has used mostly, um, in the, like the kitchen area, the hallways and so we had, you, we use the big floor scrubber in the back. Um, this unit actually can actually go into the bathrooms and it's, will fold down enough to get underneath sinks. And so we had very functional, they, they went and had it demoed, a couple of them demoed here a couple of weeks ago, so.
Mr. Chair, question.
Yes.
Um, that two hundred dollar trade-in value on that, that one, that's not something that can be repurposed to another?
No, it's pretty well, it's pretty well shot, yeah. It's pretty well shot.
Okay.
Um, we looked at, it could surplus it and be an on auction. Um, I think we're going to get two hundred dollars and we're going to get more value out of it by trading it in than actually putting on a surplus auction.
I just wanted to make sure we couldn't use it in another department.
Yeah, there's all the.
A motion by, uh, Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Gable to, uh, go ahead with this, uh, scrubber. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I will get a side note, I will get that for surplus to, for trade, so.
Thank you.
Yup, yes, um, Steve, you've got the rates, uh, for the campground.
Also going to hand out these, want to split those that way, split these that way. The rates here that I'm proposing is what I had is for the campground for two thousand and twenty-five, not for this coming year. Um, I do this because of year ahead bookings, always year ahead. But what I just gave you also was, this is the rates there that I just gave you is what the rates are set for at City Park, um, for two thousand and twenty-four and for the comparison level. If I got myself, yup. As you can see, some of them are, are higher at City Park, some of them about the same. Um, the biggest thing that you can, that I'll note on the county, um, that already includes, includes the taxes already. Whereas everybody else is, is tax plus for city. Um, also, if you want to relate to, um, state parks, state parks are also, um, they have the rate plus taxes. So very comparable, I think we are probably very comparable, very low rated compared to a lot of situations. Um, I know that, um, my managers had made a comment that, you know, I could raise the rates at the full fifty amp pull-throughs higher because they are strong demand, they don't hesitate on them and so we had, but I don't want to inflate too much of everything, so.
Second motion.
And there's been a motion made, second, to approve the rates for twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-five.
Oh, twenty twenty-five.
Yup.
Okay, um.
Hi, I do a chair question.
Yup.
Uh, the, the Girl Scout building that we're, was that going to be up and running?
Um, I don't think it'd probably be up and running at this present time currently right now, they, they'll have to get the, that done. Um, I have, uh, intentions on putting the wall in there between the kitchenette and where the, where the, uh, um, fireplace is at and kind of make that sort of living quarters in there and make a kitchenette separate. So by the time I get everything functioning, I don't believe I'll have that. I probably will in twenty-five, but I better first see where we're setting on that construction, on that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, let's just go down to number nine, item number nine.
Okay, um, this one here is a, uh, for brightly our software or our, um, work order stuff for, it was facility due. Um, it had changed names back in March of two thousand twenty-two. Um, I was approached by, by them that they were upgrading the system, the software on it. Um. The old software will be functioning for a while, but in time it will, um, they will go away with the old software. And so with that, we could turn around and they gave a proposal of, uh, for upgrading the system. And so that, and then they took on the first column here on page two. Um, the total of the assessment for one year is five thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. But it's already, some is already prepaid already, so they are going to take off nineteen hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents, which gives a total of thirty-nine, three thousand nine hundred sixty-seven seventy-seven for annually. Um. Then the assessments, what would be is getting everything converted over in the consultation for, um, all the system would be eleven thousand ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents. Um, this is, they base this all on square footage and it's all on square footage of the courthouse, the detention or the detention center, the ag building, the ag shop or the highway shops are not in this assessment, um, pool. The only thing that they have in the system is actually is the heaters into them, but the buildings itself is not on that assessment. Um. About a year ago, there was a outfit that emailed me called Cartograph. Um, they had turned around and done, um, a preliminary deal of, we gave them about the same amount of area. Their assessment would have been twenty-five thousand dollars to assess it, plus a ten thousand dollar annual fee for makeup. Um, I don't have the plan, but this is what I had jotted down from my conversations with them.
Hmm.
Just for, uh, Commissioner Swer's information, we've been through this software before and, and things like this and it's been going on since Milo was here and, and, uh, work orders and would you explain this a little bit to?
Um, what this does is, is one of the things that's beneficial for this is, is work orders. So a department area or somebody in there requests to have something that they've noticed something like lights or heater not working. Sometimes it even goes to the fact that they want paper or need something, supplies that's in the basement. So it goes in there, cements it, and then when those things are done, then it tabulates how much either the repair cost and all that is put into the system, um, and it includes all labor, like for an instance, if there's paper that's taken up, that labor is included for what it took to do the labor.
Nice. It tracks all that.
I have another, and it also like if you're using supplies, it makes sure that gets reordered.
But yes, um, this is where this system is going to function a little better than the other one. The other one you had to actually literally go into there and actually submit it out. Now with this, you can actually turn around an app on their phone, they can turn around and actually go in and take it that they did and inventory takes it off the inventory already. Um, that is where the upgrade of this is a lot better and stuff, so.
Is, uh, Mr. Chair, so, so just so I understand the cost of the first two pages, you had the annual cost.
Yup.
Um, which was going to be five thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars, cents, like that'll be the annual for the first three years.
Thirty-six months, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, then you have the one time where they've, you know, put out all the data, all the information about our facilities. And then what's the third page, just so I understand that?
Third page is the fees, what it'd be for the following year is the second year and then the third year, yup, for the years follow. Um, generally they, generally they've submitted, but they've put it in here in their quote to turn on what the forecast. And I don't remember, he gave me like a certain percentage every year, either three or something like that, without calculating it out, it's probably around about a, oh, uh, my estimate would be is probably about, oh, three, four percent, something like that.
This system also, we've got, we bought our floor scrubber this morning, uh, it'll, if we have a cost with that.
Right, you put them functions in there, yeah.
Know how many repairs have been going.
That is correct, yup.
Period of time.
Yup.
And what it costs to repair.
Yup, that is one of the things probably in the, in the history somewhat, some of that stuff never got really implemented. It takes time to, for always somebody going in and doing all those entries of that, so.
Sure, so probably will take up to, to, to that.
Well, I do not know exactly. I, I was going to tell them that probably have it presented a week ago or so, but with everything going on, I kind of waited until I did my report. Um, I would estimate there will probably be up and going here in February sometime, soon as they get to go ahead.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Van Dusen, second by Commissioner Gable to, uh, approve this vote for this. Um, is there any further discussion?
Chair, I do have a question about training. Is there going to be some training required?
Yes, that's, there'll be some training, that's where the, you're the, the, um, the one, the professional fees, the consulting involves. And so we had, and it'd be, it'd probably most likely it'd be, they'll either zoom or whatever of training and so that and, and given some. I don't really anticipate in-house. So that's, that they didn't really say that they'd be showing up, somebody showing up, so.
It seemed to me that we used to send vital to Timbuktu somewhere.
Well, to, to Carolina and so that, they have an annual deal every year over there for training and so that. It probably would be a good thing for me to go once. I don't think I need to go all the time, but probably would be a good experience for me to go for some of that. I'll probably get a lot more documentation from going there on some.
That, uh, down there for professional services at eleven thousand dollars probably includes an onsite visit to.
It probably would.
Everything is.
I mean, they never really specifically said somebody was going to be on site, but.
I'm guessing, just to make sure that it's.
I could reach out to find out for sure if somebody's going to come here to the contract. Yeah, I didn't pull the really to read the contract, but.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Steve, that's a lot of stuff. Well, Rick, mine up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, hi, Rick. Morning. Well. Another kind of almost boring monk for the highway department, which is good. I know, uh, visiting with a few of the superintendents a little further south. They, we had kind of a crappy weekend, but theirs was even worse. They had a lot more snow and they had the same wind and, uh, they had roads plugged and I heard there was even some state highways that were closed for a while. But. All of our equipment, we had the four inches of snow on the tent, we're out, we got things cleaned up. And, uh, this last weekend with the wind, we had to send a couple of motor graders out to scrape off a few spots. It wasn't nothing major, but it was in the strangest places, one of the spots was right on top of a hill. There was no trees, no weeds, no nothing, and it was three feet deep across the road.
Wow.
Uh, that was kind of odd, but we had a couple of those spots, but now all the motor graders are out today trying to clean things up because the, the banks are hard, the trucks wouldn't, wouldn't even put a dent in it. So those guys are out cleaning up. I want to thank Lori and Lynn for all the hard work they did to get the FEMA stuff that FEMA had requested that we do and, uh, they had to go through stacks and stacks of gravel receipts. You know, FEMA was missing one receipt and, uh, they spent a lot of time doing that. I want to thank those guys, it was a lot of work.
Thank you.
It's all been sent in, so hopefully everything is good now, so. We were able to do a little riprap work before the weather got cold on County Road eight-two, which is a hundred to sixty-eight street. Guys did a really nice job on getting, uh, the riprap placed and hopefully it'll be good if the wa, I know the water will come up eventually. Inventory has been completed. The guys have been busy working on snow equipment and things that we didn't have time to do this summer because we just went from one project to another and they weren't in the shop very much. And now they're in the shop, they're also cleaning stuff that hadn't been cleaned for quite a while, kind of proud of that. Um, Scott Pretzer with the state DOT, he's the one that's contacted me about the right away up on County Road two, which is west of the research farm. It sounds like the state is going to plot that two miles now for the hundred foot. And, uh, so it'll be belong to us eventually, so. Being it's still DOT right away, because that was the one that had the hundred and fifty foot right away. And the hundred foot, or you guys remember, I brought pictures in to show you where the power poles are beyond that, so. Hopefully we'll get that all straightened out and they asked, he asked if we had any interest in the, uh, the remaining eleven miles that cuts to the southeast across township roads and I told him I would ask you guys, but I didn't think so.
Nah, probably not so much.
Have you heard anything in reference to releasing those easements, you know, that were put on that corner?
I, all he had was about the plots and he didn't, didn't go into anything.
Yeah, I've been working with some of the landowners up there and they, they were notified that they were going to release those easements.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, it hasn't happened to my knowledge.
No, they're still, like you said, they're still working on plotting that, so hopefully after that, those easements will come to the farmers, so.
That's good, now I have an answer for it.
Okay, yup, and when I hear anything, when it gets plotted, I'll let you know, so.
In fact, I was, yeah, acquiring with the, uh, offices up here and they said that the last time that happened, they were never, I mean, they, they just were released, they never had a forewarning or anything, they just released them. Uh, right, like get to the back of the tax rules, there's some pretty good size easements through there. And when they're going to take Highway twenty and then cut across to.
Yup.
Twenty.
Yup, and that's, that's what the, all this was, so, yup.
When they do their plot map and, and a hundred feet, that'll be fifty feet on each side.
Correct.
On the center line.
Correct, okay. Yup, yeah, cause like I said, on the north side where the power poles are, I really don't want any right away past the power poles. Let the farmers have that back, so, and they've been farming it all along, it's just one of those deals, so.
They might have to pay taxes on this.
That's possible.
Instead of free land.
That's possible, but that's all I have unless you have any questions on anything, so.
Good, thank you.
Good job, keep the road open.
Yup.
Yeah, we've got good weather, that helps.
Like I said, today it's a nicer day than it was yesterday. You don't need a chin strap to keep your hat on.
Yeah. Definitely helps with the snow removal budget.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Yup. Okay, um. Number ten is action to approve, uh, a resolution for the sale of the tax deed property that we had last week. Um. Motion by, uh, Commissioner Gable, second by Commissioner Waterman to approve the quick claim deed on that land that sold last week.
This is a resolution twenty twenty-four too. Yup.
Yup, purchase price was four hundred bucks.
Yes. Oh, crap.
Oh, the right, yes, resolute, yup. Oh, it's two separate things here.
Yes.
Yes, okay, um, so we have a motion and a second.
A move.
Oh, we already have a motion and a second, well, we'll need a second one for the quick claim deal. Um, any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now number, uh, eleven is to authorize the auditor to issue a quick with claim for that tax deed property that we sold, uh, last week.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Van Dusen to, uh, uh, do this, uh, quick claim deed for that property. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, motion carries.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm up there. Number twelve is to approve a consultant agreement between Cottington County Welfare, Welfare and Angela Height. Do you want to go through that?
Yeah, um, community services now, but it's just around here, but that, we're getting, we're getting there, we're getting there, yes. Um, yeah, um, so, um, this is just a renewal of the contract that we have with Angela, it's for up to ten hours a week. It will now be funded through the Beyond Idea Grant, and so this won't come out of any county funds, this will come out of the Beyond Idea Grant. And so it's just to sign the agreement between county and Angela.
Okay, motion to approve, second by Commissioner Gable, um, on this, uh, approved the contract, all those, is there any more discussion?
Just so people know, this is just continuing what Angela's been doing, um, we have.
Yeah, she's been doing this for about a year, so we won't.
And how long will this contract last?
This contract is for six months.
Six months.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
What did you just hand out to us?
This is the next agenda item.
All right. I'm not yet had a.
Okay, sorry, just being on the ball.
Really on the stick here.
Yeah, motion, second.
Yup, there's been a motion and second, seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, okay, item thirteen. Um, yeah, discussion of possible action to approve contract with, uh, Sage Consulting for community needs assessment using Beyond Idea Grants funds.
Yeah, so this is again, um, this won't come out of any of the county funds, but all of this will come from the Beyond Idea Grant. And so it's just a contract between the county and Sage Consulting. They're going to perform a social services needs assessment, um, about twelve to sixteen weeks timeline. And so this will allow them to do that. We'll have, um, a small committee that will help oversee it from our social services advisory council here in Watertown.
Love to prove.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay. It's been a motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Gable to, uh, approve this contract. Any further discussion? To approve this contract. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, I have a question for you on this. What do we anticipate that assessment is going to show?
So this is really to get the data that we need to show what our needs are, and so that's this, the point of this needs assessment is to get. A voice from our clients, to get the data from the clients that we serve so that we can really hear from the clients. So far, all of the goals and objectives we've made have been from professionals in our community, and we want to get a voice from the community itself.
Yeah.
Well, so, and is that their methodology, is they, they're coming through interviews and things like that?
Yes, yes, it is. Yeah, so they will do, um, they'll develop the tool. The goal of this is also that we can reutilize this format. Um, we'd like to. Be able to do this every like three to five years to see if we're actually meeting the needs that are identified. So they'll develop that tool and then they'll go out and do the interviews. Some of it will be, um, around the community. They would probably be an option for a digital. Format that people can do, and then they'll also do some interviews, like some longer, more intense interviews with people as well.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yes, um, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Send it digital.
Oh, they will.
Yes. So I'll connect with you.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Okay, number fourteen is action to declare cameras at the sheriff's office surplus to be donated.
All right, so you have that information, um. In front of you, it was a request to surplus, uh, a chess camera that will be donated to Cottington County Coroner. And then there's, um, nine DVM eight hundred camera kits donated to the Spink County Sheriff's Office.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Commissioner Van Dusen, second by Commissioner Gable to, uh. Declare these cameras surplus.
Is that in our packet? I'm sorry, Brenda, I'm not seeing it.
I thought it was in there.
Just want to make sure I have the right cameras.
I thought it was in there, but.
Can you, can you give us the camera list again?
Yeah, so it's sixteen, this, the first thing for the coroner is a sixteen first view chess camera. You probably know what that is.
Body cameras?
Yep, and that's going to the coroner, and then there's nine DVM eight hundred camera kits donated to Spink County.
Okay.
Sorry, I was thinking it was all in there. I had it in mind.
They're all good. Yeah, we already have a, yeah, and they're, obviously they're a good camera. We're just upgraded ours, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion?
Must not be much of a secondary market for those then.
I. It's, it's like technology that gets old is just not.
Well, I said, just.
Yeah. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Number fifteen is action to appoint title, uh. That'd be six coordinator.
Okay, so currently your title six coordinator is Natalie, our HR. Um, and I guess every year this is just customarily, we need to go through this process and, and do that again.
Motion to.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Gable, second by Commissioner Johnson, um, to, uh. Appoint Natalie as the coordinator. Any further discussion?
Congratulations.
It's unreported, yeah.
It's gonna be a slam dunk.
It's only on your term.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Now you can say congratulations.
Well, cake after. Great campaign speeches.
Okay, uh, number sixteen is action to sign the, uh, title six policy statement and authorize publication for title six. Title nine.
Did I do the wrong way?
Yeah, sixteen and then it goes to thirteen and fourteen.
Oh, my God.
That's okay.
Oh, wow.
I didn't see.
The first sixteen.
Yeah, I kept doing that on me and then I go back in and. Oh, my land.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, sorry. I thought I had.
By Bandu's and second by Commissioner, uh, Johnson to, uh. Will sign and authorize this, um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, now we will, uh. Have another thirteen, item thirteen.
You can change it to seventeen, what it's supposed to be. I don't know what.
We'll just renumber those.
Yeah, just renumber them as we go because, yeah, these were things I added in and then it messed it up, and I guess it didn't totally take it out. So.
Okay, item seventeen is to review and possible action to approve updated job description for, um. Health administrative tech.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, in front of you, you should have a job description for this position, and this is kind of just a cleanup. If you recall last year, our county health nurse's office to. That covers the WIC and then the county health services, the state had decided they were going to split. Those responsibilities and we just previously had had everybody kind of doing everything, and so there was a job description that was WIC and public health tech is the way this previously read. Um, but now the WIC has split off of that. We took care of that last year. We hired somebody for that. You may recall that. And so this is just cleaning up indicating that this position that this individual holds, um, Sarah in that office, this is. Not involving WIC now, so any reference to WIC on this job description was removed. And you'll see a personnel change that you'll be handling later as well to change her title. Um, and reassign her to the nurse's office, the county health nurse, um, so just.
It's just clarifying.
Yes.
Clean up.
Clean up.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Yep, motion by Commissioner Gable, second by Commissioner Johnson to, uh, approve this updated job description. For the health administrative tech. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Okay. Item eighteen is.
That will just leave, we'll put that off till next week.
Yeah. I got a sheet for that, uh.
Nineteen.
Nineteen is a note through the Magic Neeler's quilt. Guide intent to hold a raffle, um. It's just they, they've sent us a letter to notify that they're going to have a, uh. Raffle and the start is February first, twenty twenty four, and the end date. Uh, for the sales and the date of the drawing is October sixth, twenty twenty four. They have the cost at two dollars each or three for, or I mean, two dollars a ticket or three tickets for five. And if you win, you're going to get a eighty by a hundred quilt valued at six hundred dollars, so we're just.
You should read that. What was it? A dollar a ticket or two for five?
Cost is two dollars each or three for five.
There, oh.
Otherwise it'd be six dollars if you bought them individually.
That's kind of wondering, not.
Oh, okay.
It's that basic.
I know Dawn pretty well. I just tried to find something to give her a bad time about.
Okay, item twenty is action to approve cash operating transfers as budgeted.
Right, so these are just the budgets that we needed to, um, they're. Move the operating cash into the various funds, um. So that we would balance out the budget.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Van Dusen, second by Commissioner Gable.
And I will have a listing of those when I do the minutes. I'll go through and list them, so.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve these transfers as budgeted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number twenty one is to action to approve twenty twenty four wage scale.
And that's not in there, um, I guess I should have made an, made an attachment for Lee. I mean, we can put it on to next week too, to give you a little time. I think Natalie's had a chance to look it over. I just wanted to make sure enough eyes were on it before I actually made it public, so, um, I don't know, I guess.
Wait till next week.
I think it's fine. I don't think there's a problem with it. It was later than that, even previous years, so. Right. Well, I'm going forward it to you quick from my computer. I guess it's, we've had a lot of eyes on it. It's, I mean, I'm, I'm confident. Pardon?
Okay, yeah, if, if we wanted to.
Should be okay.
I mean, we're, I know we're already.
Yeah, because.
You know, abusing it, but we just need to do the formal approval.
Right, so, I mean, they get paid the last Tuesday in January, so we still have one more week, right? Cause they don't get paid till the last week, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, Mr. Chair, just, so since we approved the, the COLO, I mean, that's, that's the key part that's going to affect this thing, so.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, no, I can. I think it'll be fine to put it off, because last year was like the last week, it was after payments, so, or last year. All right.
Number twenty two is action to approve abatement applications.
Okay, we have one abatement, uh, application and. It is number, let me find this here, um, the total amount. That's being abated is, uh, one thousand four hundred thirty eight oh eight. And the reason for the abatement is there was a fire, and so they're abating a portion of that. And the house was completely a loss, so. That's the amount that they are abating.
Move to approve, sorry.
Okay, there's been a motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Gable to approve this, uh. Abatement application. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number twenty three is action to approve claims for payment.
Right, you have those, um. Some of the bigger ones that you will see is the annual exchange for the Defender and, uh, Microsoft three sixty five. All the departments had that amount taken out of their budgets this month for their yearly. Amount, um, the Director of Vehicleization, she had, um. A bigger amount that goes to the city of Watertown. That's for the share in the flyover for their GIS. So that's for that contract that they have. Um, I don't, you know, the rest is pretty. Explanatory unless you have any questions. Yourselves. Otherwise, the total amount. Is, uh, four hundred and seven thousand six sixty one forty eight. Our state pass through amounts was paid separately last week because of the deadline, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gable.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Van Dusen. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We have another claim also for the nine one one fees. And that goes to the city of Watertown as well in the amount of twenty four thousand three hundred thirty two dollars and seventeen cents. And that reflects the amount of November there, there be.
Mr. Chair, I will be recusing myself in this book.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Gable, uh. To approve that for the city. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number twenty five is, um, action to approve personnel changes.
We have one, and that is Sarah Ammon. Uh, she's a public health administrative tech and a county health nurse, um. She's at step nine, so there's new change and the new rate of pay is twenty three eighty, and that is no change as well. Just need to change her title. Um, for what she's currently actually doing.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Waterman, second by Commissioner Johnson to, uh, approve these changes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty six.
Uh, no travel requests.
No travel requests, um. Number twenty seven, um. Any public notice for possible quorum? Ja- January eighteenth isn't there?
So there's Thursday, Thursday evening, five thirty, that's going to be in the, in the new courtroom, uh, in the lower level, so. Public media people can come and watch. Take in the.
Will we have an update on?
Yeah, I'll, I'll mention something.
Okay, 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 thanks, Lee. Okay, uh, anything else, Commissioner Johnson, your calendar?
No.
Okay, item twenty eight is old business. Any old business?
Mr. Chair, just to continue on the Justice Advisory Committee, so as you know, we, we issued the RFP, but a little over a month ago, December. So for pre-design architectural services, again, looking at the jail, um. So those proposals are due tomorrow, so I expect most of them will probably come electronically, but, um, and we talked about the paper copies need to be postmarked. Tomorrow, and then, uh, we'll be talking about them, uh, on the eighteenth, so how are we going to go about evaluating them? A, a couple of things we're looking at is, um. One, you, some, some of the sub-commissions might remember, we had a, a jail consultant to do our jail population projections, uh, Mr. Garnos, so he's given us a quote, so we'll be. Talking about that perhaps, um, and then, uh. Maybe looking at other ways to save money and help us through the process, a little bit different, so other jurisdictions have used the thing called an owner's rep. It's kind of like a construction consultant. Um, so I know the city uses it for the ice rink or for the well center, Clay County's using one for their, uh. Uh, for their justice, for their jail project, so, um. Something that we might want to talk about, so probably that'll be another topic of discussion, so that would be. Something that can help us work through the process of like, looking at the architecture proposals and all those things. Um, I think we did a decent job last time, but this is something that might tweak the process and, and in the end, the, the goal is to save money, obviously, so, um, and that's. And there are a few, few different ways of going about things, so. So that's what, what, so the basic agenda items are jail consultant, looking at the proposals we get in and maybe talking about, uh, construction consultant as well.
Thanks. Yep, thanks, Commissioner Gable. Is there any other old business? We'll move down to number twenty nine is new business. Any new business? And we're at item or number thirty, uh. Just for the open, any public comment?
Did we, uh, did we skip over fourteen? Well, on the old numbering, uh, election judges.
We, no.
No, we postponed.
All right.
Yep.
I thought I heard that, but I, I haven't checked it off my, I'll check her off.
Any commissioner comments?
Uh, just one, I was approached by people in Fuller Township. And they're on the township board and they were wondering about putting in or attaching. Possibility of attaching their township's website to the county website. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think, and, and so, see what they have, so that you can talk to our, our website person, that's probably the way to still link it. Yeah, they were doing a link, you know, so if there was roads that were closed or, uh, road restrictions, uh, things like that. Have there other townships out there that have websites? I didn't do that, have a website. Well, that's, that's easy, that's, that's an easy thing. Well, that's, that's easy, that's, that's an easy thing to do.
But would, would there, is there any objection to something like that?
No.
More information, yeah, more information people have, and it's like that new thing with the nine one one with the. Identifying more roads. Closed or not open, it would all fit into that same.
More information we can push out to the public, the better.
That was part of our discussion last night was uh. You know, if we get a lot of snow, if we get flooding, if we get whatever. That's uh.
For that information, I'm just wondering, Troy, would that be better to go through the nine one one? Than through the county website? I would think people will look more there than on the county website for those sorts of things.
Probably be done on both. Do both.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's, it's not going to cost us any more money to link their website to ours, so I mean, it's, the more information people have, I think the better. They can go find it.
With the, with the county and then. This, this. Really started with the federal, with the interstate. And they closed the interstate and people would jump off the interstate and go on state roads and stuff like that. Well. Now they're following it through. They're going to be, and what about county roads or township roads? And uh.
So I'll get back to that. The tricky part of, of doing that is making sure that the information is updated and accurate. So that you're not directing people onto a township road that's closed or open, whatever. So. Just making sure that the, the information, if we do link it to the county website, is updated and current would be. Job.
Yeah, and who's going to maintain it for this whole town? Yeah, we're, I mean, township, they'll have to have somebody.
That. Website. Individual to go in. Exchange, unless they look out. The ability to with themselves, I don't know.
Well, if they're having, if they're maintaining a website, they have, they're doing it themselves. We're just talking about.
It's just a link, yeah.
Um, item. Yep. Any further discussion on that? That's all good information. Um. Number thirty one, uh. Executive session. No need for.